Town Board Special Meeting, although I know all our meetings are special. This is Thursday, May 18th at 7:00 p.m. As usual, I'll call this meeting to order at exactly 7:00 p.m. And if you would all join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So, no, but this meeting truly is special. We have a presentation this evening regarding longstanding Burgess study and the update on that. I'm sure it'll be a very interesting and engaging presentation. And I'd like to turn the mic and the floor over to Michelle Lindsay for some opening remarks and set the stage for this important meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Good evening and thank you for your interest in this proposed plan to revitalize our downtown. What we call the Hamlet is the historic town center for all areas of the town and the village. We meet here to memorialize on Memorial Day and celebrate holidays. It's here that our train station, library, post office, town hall are where people can greet each other on a daily basis. Tonight, we will present Phase One of a multi-pronged, multi-year proposal for infrastructure investments that achieve some of the goals of the town's comprehensive plan. With Town Board approval, we can apply for matching fund grants and start this project this year. We did meet with various stakeholders in the community, businesses, the library, the historical society. We met with Michael Bruno, Mike Santiani of TPA Realty, Noreen Fennell from the Chamber of Commerce, and others within the town. Greg Stevens' comments at another presentation of this plan did help us to make some important changes that I think were very good changes to make. So, in our presentation, we will discuss other projects that we are currently working on. And we will discuss how those other objectives will fit with Phase One, how it all fits together. The comprehensive plan was developed by the Town Board with many residents and the town's consultants. Community meetings were held, surveys were filled out and analyzed, and they all helped to shape that plan. The plan was last reviewed and updated in 2018. Bonnie Franzen, our town planner, was instrumental in guiding the town throughout the development of the comprehensive plan. Bonnie will discuss the goals of that plan for Hamlet revitalization and how this proposal for Phase One achieves some of those objectives. Ed Snikus from Burgess Associates helped to develop the first town center study that became part of the comprehensive plan. Last year, the Town Board asked Ed to update that study, and now Ed will present Phase One of that update he did last year. After the presentations, we will welcome your questions and your feedback, which will only make the final proposal that much better. So, with that, I will turn it over to Bonnie Franzen, our town planner.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Town Board members. As Michelle said, I'm Bonnie Franzen. I've actually been working with the town since about 1990. But I have worked on all three town adopted comprehensive plans. There was one in 2003, which was updated in 2011, which was then subsequently updated in 2018. Integral to all of these three adopted plans has been the principle that the Tuxedo Hamlet is the town center for the community. The Hamlet has always been intended to be the social gathering place for the town. It's intended to link the town's neighborhoods and the village socially together. It is the center of government functions. It has the one major town park, which hosts social events. It has centralized sewer and water, the train station, and is accessible because it's on a major state highway, which poses opportunities and constraints. Among the 2018 Plan's recommendation was to assert, again, the Tuxedo Hamlet's role as a civic and cultural town center of the community. And it recommended that the original town center study that was prepared in 2003 be updated with revised plans and incorporate the concept of complete streets. And that is a planning concept, which is a holistic framework for the design of a community. And it integrates the mobility of pedestrians and transit and vehicles together in a safe, walkable pattern. The 2018 Plan also specifically discussed that the town work with New York State DOT to work and pursue a road diet. And the nearest example of that is in the village of Slotesburg. Their comprehensive plan, they had DOT work with them. And the transformation you see downtown in Slotesburg was the result of one of these road diet projects. The 2018 Plan essentially incorporates the recommendations and findings of the 2003 Plan, and it's included as an appendix in the 2018 Plan in its entirety. Just a little side note, so the impetus for the 2003 Hamlet study was Tuxedo Reserve at that time. In fact, the Hamlet planning process preceded approval of the first Tuxedo Reserve special permit that was adopted. When that project was proposed, there was a lot of back and forth in terms of how the Tuxedo Reserve, now Tuxedo Farms project, would integrate the neighborhoods within the town. And the town at that time did not want necessarily that that be the center. They still wanted the Hamlet to be the center, but Tuxedo Farms to provide a conduit and a way to link south to the center. So, the reason you see the road cut and the road that's at the north end here just below the Hamlet is because the permit required that there be that access point so that people that reside in that future development would be close to the Tuxedo Hamlet and help the Hamlet thrive and grow. There was also to be a sidewalk linkage. And if you look at Tuxedo Farms and where it's situated, really the most dense part of that project is to the north, near the Hamlet Center. And certainly, there are connections to the Hamlet from Tuxedo Farms. So, in anticipation of that Tuxedo Reserve development, the Tuxedo Town Center, a master plan, was prepared and adopted. And it was prepared, started in 2001, but it was prepared by a Town Center Revitalization Committee, and its members included Town Board members, residents, as well as merchants and Chamber of Commerce representatives. The 2003 Plan was prepared by Burgess Associates, and Ed is with Burgess, so you could see over 20 years, there's some continuity here. And the study area extended from what is now Steve's, which is sort of the southernmost part of the commercial business district, to the Village Gateway, to the Village's Gate. So, its primary goal of that study was to create a sense of place and transform the Hamlet into the town center. And it acknowledged the various strengths and constraints to transformation. So, some of the opportunities were and still are that we now have a new town park in that location. The government center is situated here in the Hamlet. We do have the train station, which is a draw for commuters, as well as other amenities. The constraints and the primary weakness has always been Route 17 and how it divides the Hamlet, how the sidewalks there, because of its four lanes, create an impediment in terms of people feeling safe, that they can walk along the sidewalk safely because of the traffic. Lack of pedestrian connections, that's really the primary challenge. Some things have been achieved since the 2003 study was adopted, and that included some rezoning that was done to incorporate a few more parcels into the town center zoning district that could be developed for commercial uses, as well as making the parking standards easier for change of use because of the parking limitations here in the Hamlet. So, the 2003 Plan, which is still in effect because it's incorporated into the 2018 Plan, has as its three primary planning concepts, critical mass to support a new town center. So, Tuxedo Farms is part of that infilled development, but there was also intended to be infilled development here in the Hamlet through some additional buildings that would accommodate commercial and residential uses. It was also to create a unified, compact contiguous shopping and entertainment experience and the place for the major social events and gatherings within the town. And then lastly, the intent was to improve the Hamlet's infrastructure, especially related to mobility and to pedestrians. So, consistently over the past 20 years, the town has supported the concept of Hamlet revitalization as being a fundamental element of the town's vision. So, with that background, I'm going to turn it over to Ed Snikus with Burgess Associates, who will go over revisions and update to this Town Center Study.
Thank you very much, Ms. Franzen. It's a very good overview, and it's interesting that it's been 20 years since we did that original study. I am now going to change over, for those who are on Zoom, to my laptop so that I can show you a series of slides that are relative to the overall study. Let me just, if you bear with me for one second, just to get that started. Okay, can everybody see that? And I guess everybody can hear me okay. As Ms. Franzen had mentioned a moment ago, is that connectivity, pedestrian access, and circulation is something that we had found in the original aspect of the study. And I'm sure all of you are well aware that Route 17 really creates a very difficult and challenging environment. But yet, it also is a conduit for commerce as it runs through the town of Tuxedo. So, what we did is, the purpose of this prong of the study was to take a look at your existing infrastructure. And when I say "infrastructure," that's a phrase that we use that calls out roads, sidewalks, ways that pedestrians can connect between portions of the community. And so, the study, this initial part of the study was to review the existing conditions, those existing conditions between the eastern and western portions of the Hamlet area and highlight features and areas for improvement. But also conceptual improvement recommendations to improve the vehicular and pedestrian circulation, as well as aesthetic character of the area. We also offer ideas to enhance the theme of the Hamlet District, utilizing some of the historic aspects of the downtown, but also add amenities and related enhancements. Some of you may have seen our initial January presentation of this. Some of the slides may look similar, but we did make some changes to some of the plans relative to input that we received. And we appreciate that input, and you can see that we did gather that information. What you're seeing on this illustration now is the overall Hamlet study area. And if I can move my mouse, I'm not sure if everybody's going to see that, but I will use a pointer here. Everybody can see that? This is Contractor Road, all the way to the south. And the study area goes up to the entrance for Tuxedo Park. Here it is. What you have is Park Avenue here, and this is Store Road. This is Hospital Road, as it goes up towards the municipal building where we are today, up here. Just to give you a frame of reference, the train station, the post office is over here. And you can see that the area that's covered is the entire corridor between that area, but also looks to try to connect in various ways the eastern and western portions of the Hamlet. I just had the roads come in. But yet, what is the major component is obviously Route 17. This is Route 17 right here, excuse me, as I try to trace that. What makes a good downtown? And what I'll call a streetscape, it's a phrase of art that we use in the planning realm that talks about various features that make up a streetscape. And a streetscape is something that we, as planners, look at in order to improve the aesthetics, improve the connectivity, improve the function, improve the various economic aspects of a business district. If you're trying to attract patrons or users for a downtown area, it's important to consider many of these features. You'll hear us talk about landscaping, lighting, some sort of thematic elements. Parking has been mentioned earlier, sidewalks, some public space, circulation, streetscape furniture, and issues such as traffic calming where possible, establish focal points, connections to transit, and possible outdoor dining areas. All those go into what is more of your traditional downtown area. And what we've noticed also as planners is that there really has been an uptick in the interest as well as the value of a downtown area. Because of the fact that we went through the COVID pandemic, everyone realized they stayed closer to home, and they needed closer activities or access to services and goods closer to home instead of traveling to more regional locations. And so, what we're seeing here is the ability to capitalize on that. And I just wanted to point that out for consideration as you look at some of these ideas. What you're seeing here is an overall map illustration. I'm going to zoom in on certain areas so that you get a sense for what we're trying to look at. This sort of looks at connectivity, issues of connectivity. I've zoomed in now towards the train station area. That's what you're seeing here. And what we tried to look at is ways of getting across Route 17. You have the existing traffic signal at Library Road. Here is Library Road in this area. So, why not use that existing traffic signal? Because that's the ability for pedestrians then to have a controlled way of crossing the roadway. And look at ways of making connections to that crosswalk. What we have from the north is you have the ability to walk down Park Avenue from the north, along Park Avenue. There is not a connection today to Van Zandt, but yet, why not look at ways of connecting that to the walkways along Route 17? So, that's what we've illustrated on this map via a yellow dash line. Some of it may not come through rather clearly, but that's what's on the map when you look at the overall report. In addition to that, at the connection at Library Road, we show a connection further to the, I would say that's to the west, on Library Road, adjacent to the library. Right now, there's a large hedge that's in this area. So, what we're trying to do is look at ways of trying to add sidewalks within the existing vernacular or existing layout of roadways. In addition to that, we try to make other connections to the individual businesses. All this connectivity renders greater access, greater usability, safety, obviously, for pedestrians, as well as bicycles and other modes of travel that may be available. So, the other thing I'll do is pan over to the left. Now that you can see the southerly area of where we're connected to. And I'm going to bring back my pointer, bear with me. Whoops, I guess it's when I'm zoomed in. Okay, now you can see the mouse on the screen. Pardon me. So, we were just looking at Library Road and this sidewalk here. What we're proposing is that there be a sidewalk extension be added to the back of the overall area of the library and then have a connection along the adjacency of Store Road and have that connection continue all the way out to Hospital Road. The idea, again, is as what we're trying to establish here is sort of a minor street or a minor connecting route in the overall downtown area. The purpose for that is that you then have the ability to circulate easily without having to go out to Route 17 with neighborhood walkways and neighborhood connectivity to adjacent streets being provided in that realm. What you'll also notice on this map is a change to the arrangement of Store Road. Previously, we looked at more ideas of how to improve vehicular circulation. We're showing now only a one-way circulation, as it exists today, in the northerly direction on Store Road. After looking at the widths of road and hearing from people, we've made that change. In addition to that, what we had in the previous plan was an idea of an intersection improvement. And this intersection improvement can take many forms. This is just initial idea currently, where you can establish a focal point with intersection. signals that they have done in Slotesburg, many have seen that, where you can press a button, it'll activate a signal, and therefore stopping traffic along Route 17, allowing, again, another way of providing connectivity between the eastern and western portions of the downtown. Bear with me as I zoom back out and go to my next slide. So, some of the existing conditions that we looked at, and I'll page through some of these rather quickly. But yet, as you look at Park Avenue, this is looking down towards the southerly direction. It is a rather wide roadway, and it can accommodate two-way circulation, but it also has the ability to possibly provide a sidewalk along the westerly side of that roadway. And that way, we would have greater connectivity from Tuxedo Park into the downtown area. Many people use this either through biking or for pedestrian access to the downtown area. Some of the other locations that we have are the intersections of other adjacent streets where the roadway does get rather narrow. And we're recognizing that, and that would still maintain as that current width. But yet, we're looking at ideas for how to also offer ways of, as was mentioned earlier, ideas of a road diet where you can also maybe have other benefits from creating different alignments to your streets. There is the ability along this rather wide roadway to expand the curbed area along this frontage, you'll see in a plan in a moment, so that we can possibly get a better way to organize the trash receptacles and the negativity that you see along the back of this building. It's somewhat negative views, it's the service side of the building, it's the obvious location for these activities. But yet, is there a way to try to improve that view and detail? This is another slide that was given to me that I think is very interesting. Shows two children that are actually traversing Store Road, walking right down the middle of the roadway because there really isn't a safe way or sidewalk that encourages them to use the sidewalk instead of the road. This is, again, another overview of some of the existing conditions analysis that we looked at. Obviously, you have your adjacent parking areas, large parking lots that are somewhat undifferentiated. There's been efforts to try to improve the aesthetics of landscaping as viewed from Route 17. But I believe there are other ways of doing so and possibly improve upon that visual image. As you can see in this photograph, the rather uncontrolled wide roadway, it is a one-way circulation, there is on-street parking that does occur. But yet, there are ways of improving this roadway by getting benefit to having pedestrian circulation and activities, but also ways of improving the aesthetics. You see other service sort of activities that occur. They're neat and tidy, but yet, could there be ways that they could be screened so that they're not so visible to such a thoroughfare that goes through your downtown? This is, again, another detailed map that we have that looks at other features that we would like to focus in on the downtown area. This is just another view at the intersection of Hospital Road and Route 17, where the actual roadway, the older historic development, had a carriageway that was in front of the building, but yet, it became rather open and wide in that area. Is there the opportunity in redeveloping the sidewalk area to possibly redifferentiate the sidewalk between the vehicular way and the sidewalk itself? But also, maybe capture this as an opportunity for a focal point in this area so that it encourages possible visitors that are traveling along Route 17 that, oh, this might be an entrance to the village. Maybe this is an area where I can pull off and visit one of the stores. So, that's some of the things that we look at, those focal points, areas, those opportunities that may not be readily visible to people using it, but yet, as an outsider looking at your downtown and your Hamlet, it's ways of trying to encourage those focal points. Again, we did extend the area further to the south, so we looked at where the sidewalks could be further improved along the area to the south of the areas that we looked at. And as you can see here in this illustration, along the easterly side of the Route 17, you have a sidewalk that's accommodated, but there's a rather different, there's many different surfaces that you're traversing as a pedestrian, walking down that streetscape. There is an opportunity, I think, to differentiate the sidewalk from the traveled way for vehicles. It does encourage, and it's surprising when you do implement these improvements, it does encourage pedestrian connectivity. You feel encouraged to walk from one business to the next instead of feeling like you're going to cross a driveway and be rather, maybe precariously out on the driveway. So, that's one opportunity that we looked at as well. Some of the conceptual improvements, just to give you an idea. This is an overall map, which I'll zoom in on so that you get a sense for how its overall layout would occur. What you're seeing here, as I move the mouse, is that concept of adding a sidewalk along the westerly side of Park Avenue. That sidewalk could connect to a sidewalk along Van Zandt and out to Route 17. Then that connection could happen at the intersection of Library Road and then have a connecting point. Currently, there is not a sidewalk that runs and connects to the train station, oddly enough. It's a large landscaped area that exists along Route 17's frontage. There have been various ideas for how to improve that frontage. But what I realize when I look at the plan is that your parking area is rather wide within that overall commuter parking lot. There's the ability to borrow five feet from that parking lot, restripe the parking spaces, and develop a sidewalk that could be added to the backside of the existing planted area that's in that area. Add crosswalks at this location so that you then add another sidewalk in front of the train station. It's another way of adding that connectivity. Again, to encourage pedestrian activity instead of walking through the roadway, is add another sidewalk possibly on this side. And then this also offers opportunity to add some additional greenery in that drop-off and pickup area. We did not change the width of that area, we just added the sidewalks adjacent to it. So, just so you get that sense. In addition, what's also shown on this illustration is another concept of a sidewalk to connect to the actual commuter parking lot that exists off of Village Road. That commuter parking lot has a staircase that terminates at the roadway, add another crosswalk here, and then another crossing of the railroad tracks. Of course, that involves the railroad, that may take some negotiations with them, but yet, it's at a signalized crossing, so therefore, it should be something that we could make happen. Right now, that's uncontrolled, and pedestrians walk down the roadway itself, the actual roadway, to get to the train station. So, we looked at ways to improve safety and circulation. What's also shown here is, I think I jumped over this, was another potential sidewalk. There's an area of striped area of asphalt that exists along Van Zandt that I'd offer that represents an opportunity to add a sidewalk and then a crosswalk to allow that connection to Route 17. There is a concept of also adding another sidewalk on the opposite side as well. Again, as I talked about before, you have the sidewalk along Library Road. I'm just going to pan over here, bear with me. Show you the southerly section, as I talked about before. I'm not going to reiterate a lot of this, but that the sidewalk would offer connectivity out towards Hospital Road. We also looked at ways for, could there be opportunities on private property to improve their parking lots? There's ways of maintaining the existing number of parking spaces. But also, is there areas for amenities and focal points? I noticed that the parking area for this property here is rather wide compared to normal industry standards. There's the ability at this location to reduce the width of that parking area and possibly capture an outdoor area or something adjacent as an amenity to this business and this property as it exists. In addition to that, there is an obvious area here to me to add another parking space adjacent to the library. And that represents another opportunity for where we can possibly add some landscaping adjacent to that corridor to help improve the greenery and the aesthetics. Going back out to Hospital Road, I did talk about the circle, but there's areas that we could possibly bump out at Store Road to add some greenery and landscaping at that entrance. So, it helps to identify and reinforce that intersection. And also frame, what I think is another asset, is the historic structure that's across the street at this location. And also frame, what I think is another asset, is the historic structure that's across the street at this location. In addition, we would add crosswalks into that concept of a circle. And those crosswalks and sidewalks would add connectivity to Route 17. And this would be the activated crossing here at Route 17. And just to give an idea of what we looked at for the southerly area along the easterly side. The mouse just cooperates here, bear with me. It seems like I'm stuck. But anyway, I was hoping to zoom in on that for you. But the crosswalk that I just talked about is here. What we noticed and identified in the report is there are several areas where it's just mecanum or asphalt that pedestrian crossings occur at. There's the ability through, there's a material available that's a polymer material that we can add to that asphalt area to help identify and differentiate the crosswalk from the actual traveled way of automobiles. So that it gives the automobile an idea that that is actually a pedestrian crosswalk, instead of feeling like they can go right out to the roadway as they do now, without looking left and right and seeing if a pedestrian or bicyclist is using the crosswalk area. In addition to that, your sidewalks are in good shape next to the ambulance corps facility. And at the firehouse, we would just add another crosswalk possibly at this location, at Contractor Road, further down towards the south. These are just a series of illustrations that I'm just gonna page through, because I've zoomed in on those same areas. This is an enlargement of how the connectivity could occur, possibly a Village Road to a crosswalk, and then maybe a little bit of an enlargement at Store Road, but I did cover that already. I also did some simulations to try to give you a visual idea of what that might look like. First, we're looking at Park Avenue, looking north at the backside of an adjacent business and roadway. But yet, after you see the simulation, you get a sense for, with some screening, you can screen back some of the more utilitarian aspects of the back of the building with the same sort of fencing that they already have that exists out there. Here's a concept of how to add a sidewalk into the roadway area, adding streetlights for street lighting. And again, the streetlights don't have to be in a regimented overly bright layout. They could be in more of a rural layout, but yet, they're providing this ambient lighting that encourages pedestrian activity, especially during winter months, when the sun does set earlier in the day. So the idea here is to show that and add that to the landscape in order to add some visual interest through the decorative style fixtures. And if many know the decorative style fixtures that are at the train station, that's what's modeled here and shown in this illustration here. Yes, there's opportunities also to add maybe some hanging baskets with flowers on them to add seasonal interest to the corridor. This is a view of Store Road and how afterwards, with some modifications, I did take liberties with some adjacent properties. But yet, this is an idea of how we can add interest and detail to the pedestrian corridor. What you're seeing here is new sidewalks that could be added, crosswalks at the entrances and exits to the parking areas, ways to improve the aesthetics, adding streetlights, decorative poles, and landscaping in this imagery. And this foreground image shows a proposed rain garden area. You have that existing drain. If I was to go back, you see the existing drain there. That could be turned into a rain garden for that parking area, so that it goes through a planted area before it goes into drainage. It's ways of adding that sort of aesthetic to the overall downtown area. So I think before and after, it has a significant impact on the aesthetics of that area. Again, adding and accentuating the fact that it's a one-way corridor. But yet, also adding potentially another crosswalk, mid-block crossing, to adjacent businesses on the opposite side of the roadway for their connectivity. Here's the existing view of Hospital Road, looking up towards the municipal building, and afterwards, how some of the improvements could be made to improve the aesthetics of that area. This is a quick illustration for how murals could add interest to buildings. This is up in Kingsbury, New Hampshire. ...that if you have an idea of doing a mural on the wall, that's interest and possibly some interesting signage. We added this possibly a coffee shop sign on the building. So you get a before and after of how that can make improvements. Find, again, I talked about the crosswalk idea. This is the installation of one of those type of crosswalks. This could be an idea, again, this is just an initial concept of a entrance into the town. Detailing, and also the symbology that's provided in your current logos for Tuxedo itself. So you add that to the signs as interest. It's a way of adding identity, historic context, and focal points in the downtown area. And this is the image of the streetlight that exists at the train station. We would look to make these more modern LED-type fixtures, but yet, put them in the warmer spectrum of color. So you wouldn't have that bright, bright white that many see of new LED fixtures. This would be in the more warmer tones. So it's compatible, and we're trying not to overscale the downtown by its brightness, but yet, add ambient lighting within the downtown area. And I think your train station is a beautiful jewel that should be celebrated, and it's something that we're trying to make greater connectivity to. Some of the earlier concepts, as you can see, there's a poster over here on one of the pews in the municipal building, some of the earlier ideas of how important this feature is to your town and how other improvements were made or attempted to be made. Tuxedo Farms, as was mentioned a moment ago, is going to add a significant component to your town. And it's important, and I think a very bold move, to require that roadway connection to Route 17, so that you have that need or that connectivity that could be provided to the downtown hamlet area. And that roadway would be in this area. Here's Route 17 down along the bottom of Tuxedo Farms. And your hamlet is over on the right-hand side in this area. What we also looked at in our study was ways of seeing, is there a way of connecting, possibly by an informal pathway, to some of the pathways that are proposed around the lake in the Tuxedo Farms development? And there is an opportunity at the end of the roadway at Hospital Road to add a trail up into that area. That won't be the most accessible trail because of the steepness of the slope in that area, but it is an opportunity to provide that connectivity to the downtown area. And this helps to illustrate some of the topographic relief that occurs at the end of Hospital Road. Here's your municipal building. And how that slope rises up and goes beyond the ridge lines to the mountain lake area. To give you a sense for the interrelationship of the overall topography. So with that, that summarizes the changes and the updates that we've made to the plan. At this point, we'd like to open it for questions, if there's any more comments that need to be made. But I would hand it over to others. Thank you. I'll leave the illustration up if that's a necessary thing.
Can you leave the connection of, you know, the master?
Sure, absolutely. Kinda do, it just takes me a second to get there.
So I just want to go over a couple of things before we went into the question. What we did, once we had this study, is we went down to many of the businesses in the hamlet, and we talked to them and showed them some of these plans and got some feedback. So a lot of these, a lot of the initial plan has been altered based on their recommendations. But the other point here is that this is one part of many parts of plans that we're working on to revitalize the hamlet. So just to give you a quick overview, we are working on and have been given a freeway grant, which we are starting right now. And that is an economic development and an economic analysis of the, not only the hamlet, but the entire corridor, starting at the beginning of Tuxedo through South Fields. And they identified where businesses are, what businesses are empty, where businesses could go, what are opportunities, what are the demographics, what businesses could survive and could survive based on demographics, where people are shopping. So it basically will give us an outline that we'll be able to put a marketing plan together, so we'll be able to start to work on stimulating economic growth within the town. This is a pedestrian and safety plan. There has to be other plans that basically underpin all of the plans in order to make a successful revitalization program. Some of the other things we're working on is safety and traffic calming going through the hamlet. We have put in a formal application to have a school district safety zone put in as you come into town. We're waiting for results on that. We've talked to Senators Lopez about the oversized trucks that are going through town and also going through Slotsburg. And we're working with Slotsburg on how we can possibly use some of the regulations that are not, they're sort of being loosey-goosey on how we can basically rein that in and try to eliminate some of these oversized trucks that are barreling through town. We're also looking at, I can't even remember all the things. We're doing quite a bit. There's the sewer program that is a very important infrastructure program, which has been worked on for quite some time. There's the LDC grant program that is, once we were granted the special permit for Tuxedo Farms, is $1.1 million for town hamlet revitalization. And so far, many local businesses have been awarded monies so that they can work on the beautification of the hamlet. So with that said, every time you start with one thing, you definitely have to look at something else. I mean, there's no silver bullet. There's, it has to be a series of plans that are implemented to pull it all together to make sure that you can move forward. One of the weaknesses that we realize we have in the hamlet is parking. So that has to be a next plan, and how we're going to address parking if we want to stimulate commercial development within the hamlet. So all of these things, there's no, it's a development and it's a work in progress. It's evolution, not revolution. And so with that said, I'd like to go over some of the comments that we got from people. And this way, you can hear what people said, what the objections were, and we can then have an open discussion, because we did learn a lot from talking to people. And we were able to make adjustments that made it a better plan. So with that said, you were gonna do the objections.
Okay, I will, happy to do that. So we met and got comments on this wonderful presentation of phase one, as this now developed. And thank you, Ed and Bonnie, for your overview and on your presentation, very clear presentation of this plan. So people who couldn't be here tonight will see, huh, didn't show up. Yep, but Mike Santiani, we met with him, TPA Milty. He has been around for a long time and has contributed and been very involved with the previous comprehensive plan, the updates to the comprehensive plan and the town study. So I'll just pick a couple of ideas from his comments. He says, "Good initial start. Would like to see the expanded connectivity throughout the village to extend to Tuxedo Farms, which was in the original plans, as we mentioned." Additional crosswalks across Route 17 would improve pedestrian traffic and connect both sides of Route 17. The plan is a good start. Pedestrian bike pathways will help economic development in the hamlet. We met with the Tuxedo Library and Diane Loomis, Tony Davidson, and Jerry Howard. Comments were, "Road calming should be a priority on Route 17. Snow tends to gather on the corner of Library Road and Route 17. Addition of a sidewalk on Library Road would likely alleviate the snow piles on the corner. The library has significant pedestrian traffic. Schoolchildren come to the library via Store Road. A pedestrian walkway would be positive." They said they would not restore current sidewalks on Route 17 without adding a buffer between traffic and pedestrians. Current sidewalk too close to traffic and it's dangerous. Brittany Fennell from...
Why are we doing this versus other things? So for example, one person said, "I would really rather see us work on Powerhouse Park." So, and that's a valid point, because Powerhouse Park is in the comprehensive plan. And we should be following the structure of the comprehensive plan. However, everything needs a plan. So you have to develop a plan. You have to decide what the objectives are, I mean, and then you can go from there. Our belief is, is that we should start at the core of the hamlet and from there, build out to see where we can add value and then bring it in. Should we, if we decided to do Powerhouse Park, where are the people who come to Powerhouse Park going to eat, sleep, and shop? So let's start in the beginning and work our way out. So that was a question and a valid question. But it also brought up the fact that we do need to prioritize, what are the next steps that we need to do to revitalize the town? So with that said, go to the next objection, because that was one, but thank you. Why spend money on other, okay. Store Road is ugly and has no pedestrian traffic or business. It's ugly, so I don't like it. So the answer is, I'm ugly when I get up in the morning and then I put on makeup and I look good. So, you know, we can make it look good. So, you know, I don't, I don't see that as an objection so much as, we did find that a lot of street, a lot of kids coming from school do use that street, going down to go to the, to the library. So it is a pedestrian walkway, yet it's not defined as one. Next one. Leave, oh, here's one that's very important. The sidewalk, if you look here and look up and you see the, if you could show, if there's a sidewalk that goes in front of Tuxedo Square, that sidewalk also houses the bus station. So the bus station and the, and the train station are very important focal points within the town. So if you were to continue though, between Library Road and to Hospital Road along that sidewalk there, that sidewalk is not to code. It's four feet, and code in New York State is five feet. And you can keep it at four feet, but every 200 feet, you have to add a five-by-five platform to allow for handicap passage. So that walkway there, that sidewalk, cannot be without intruding on private property going backwards into that parking lot. backwards into that parking lot or without a road diet where you're able to come into Route 17, cannot be redone to fit code. So right now, we can continue to patch it, but we will have to find alternatives. Should we want to have that sidewalk, we need to have alternatives of how we can address that problem. So that's why the Store Road sidewalk in the back of it is a, is a good interim solution for walkways. So that's being said with that. Why can't we just do one part? We only want to do the train station. And that's a different plan. That's not this plan. I mean, if we only want to do the train station, that's just, okay, that's a train station program. This is a connectivity, safety program that basically is something that was started with and is, it follows the comprehensive plan. So dividing it up and making it into a Chinese menu does not necessarily fulfill that plan. So if we want to only do one part, it should have an objective, it should have a plan, and should be reasonable as to why we want to do that. This is, has one specific idea and we should either decide whether this concept is a good concept or not. And if we wanted to do something different or nothing, those are the kind of things that we should decide about moving forward. Next. The last one is parking. And I think everybody is, really does understand that parking is a, is an obstacle that has to be developed. And as a result, it needs a formal plan to address how we're going to address parking in the, in the town. So it's recognized, it is a problem, and it has to be addressed. So with that said, those are the objections that we tried to talk to people about. So I'd love to hear comments.
We'll start with the people in the audience and then town board or, start with the town board?
No.
Okay, okay. Super. So we'll start with the people in the audience?
It seems to me that the, you need a microphone so people...
Oh, sorry, yes. Marissa is gonna bring you.
Hold on, you have a mic.
I have.
Oh, you have? Oh, you started?
They know me.
Go ahead. It's, not knowing much about what's been going on here for the last few years, it seems to me that the elephant in the room is the through traffic on Route 17.
Yes.
Now, I know that I last heard several years ago that there was some talk about a 15B exit on, on 87. Is there, what would be the possibilities or is there any effort being made in trying to find a way to get that, to get that implemented so that this downtown area can be finally, I would think, free of that through traffic? That's gonna only get worse.
Well, it was mentioned in the comprehensive plan, was it not Bonnie? That it would be investigated?
Yeah, it was, it was investigated. In fact, once upon a time, when you were also gonna have Sterling Forest State Park developed, there was enough traffic that would have warranted construction of 15B. The last time, the last iteration of it was with Casino. When there was a proposal to build a casino along 17A, again, 15B was proposed. And there were some challenges because of the fact that it'd be taking up state park land, et cetera. So I think in terms of the throughway authority, building another interchange, it has to be warranted from a traffic perspective. And they made improvements at 32 and 17 to get on the throughway. I just don't know that there's the volume at this point to warrant the amount of money it would cost to put a 15B in at this point. But it's certainly part of the comprehensive plan to acknowledge that that would have been one of the better solutions to get in traffic off 17 to then be able to do the road diet. But having said that, you can see Slotesburg forward anywhere. Anyway, there's no 15B. They experience the same traffic you do, plus some from their own community and from the parks itself, you know, people who get on generally a drive. So I don't know that just because there's not a, I'm sorry, an interchange 15B that you still can consider.
A road diet here, which is right now, I think, kind of the higher up option because I don't see 15B happening right now.
We are pursuing a road diet. That was one of the priorities of everyone we talked to. So we are looking, we have met with New York State DOT. We've also met with Senator Scafus. And I've talked to several people in New York State DOT on how to pursue, how to go forward with a, a di, a road diet. But that again, needs a plan and, and how we're gonna do it because there's many ways you can, you can address it. Most municipalities wait for a federal grant. That federal grant is not available for applications until May of next year. However, there are other ways we can supplement and go forward with a couple of things, but I'm still doing some research on that. But that was a priority of the people that we talked to.
I wouldn't hold my breath if it came to you.
Can you identify yourself to anyone that wants to speak?
Andy Berish.
I am.
Adding all these sidewalks to the, to these roads that are so narrow, isn't that gonna affect the roads as they are now?
Well, we measured Store Road and I'll let Ed talk to that.
Yeah, the roads are, have the width to add a five-foot sidewalk along the roadways. And that's something too, that with the removal of the two-way traffic, it could definitely work in your areas of the streetscape. And that would be our next phase, is to actually do the engineering to figure out exactly where things would go.
Those things, the roads are so narrow.
But there's, there is room for the sidewalks.
Okay.
And, and cars.
For Store Road.
For Store Road, correct. As well as park.
And, and park.
When is Tuxedo Farms gonna start building anything? We've heard this for 20 years now.
So Tuxedo Farms, they've submitted plans for their first phase, which is the mixed use center for Tuxedo Farms. It's in front of the planning board right now. And they're making some revisions. They may have to come back to the town board because I think they want to implement more parking within this center. So it's, it's in front of the planning board, plans are being engineered, and it's in process. They got their conceptual plan approval from the town board. The special permit was updated. It's now in front of the planning board. And once it's approved, that would initiate construction. Jerry?
Jerry Matola, Seven South Side Place, Tuxedo, New York. I saw this plan in January and I didn't like it then. And furthermore, don't like it at all. Okay, let's just take a look at the train station, if you can. Did anyone measure between the curb and in front of the train station?
Yes.
How wide is?
I don't know offhand.
It's 15 feet now. You put a five-foot curb in, whether it be here or straight across, leaves 10 feet. Barely enough for a car to get by.
There is room beyond the actual asphalt to put in a sidewalk. That's the idea.
What, take part in front of the train station?
Yeah.
No?
Not part of the building, no.
No.
Part of the landscape area, yeah.
Park avenue. Are you gonna put a sidewalk all the way to Tuxedo Park?
That's the concept, yes.
What use is it?
Has, it has, has the ability for pedestrians to connect to Tuxedo Park.
And biking.
And biking.
People go to the train station, bus stop.
When you say sidewalk, is it raised up sidewalk? Or you just mean it?
In that area, probably it would be a level sidewalk with the road, but branchiated with the road. It would be depressed so that you couldn't get to the park.
I've heard somebody say it's parking wrong.
I would think, I don't mean to interrupt your time, but I would think, oh, I would, oh, Fran, Fran. By the way, congratulations to this board, you know Bonnie Franzen, and I chaired the revitalization of downtown. Twenty years ago, I was still alive. I don't expect to see 15B. And, but I do applaud you for staying the course. It was a stunning challenge then. It took me three years to create this document. Bonnie was there. It was meant to be a flexible document. I was thrilled to find out from Michelle Lindsay and all things, all the board, that it was an opportunity and gave a vehicle for some funds. And again, I applaud the town. And why I'm speaking is in regards to the sidewalk. I think we saw pictorially about how you saw the two teenagers. Without any delineation, one can't help it. It's just sort of natural where you just walk in the middle of the road. So given that you're not taking someone's front yard, but it does indicate for someone to stay off to the right, stay on the sidewalk. So that votes to the safety issue. That is really critically important. I want to let you finish up because I don't want to take your time, but I do have some comments after that.
Oh, okay. Again, back to Store Road. You have the Tuxedo Library. How many parking spaces are aligned there?
There are actually no parking spaces aligned. People are parking there without actual aligned parking spaces.
There are seven line spaces on the side, right here.
Oh, yes, yes, there. I thought you meant on Store Road. Excuse me.
Again, Store Road, these seven parking spaces belong to Mr. Santa Mary. He can choose what he wants to do with those. Right now, we've loaned them to the library. You put in trees. Who's gonna maintain them?
We would look at certain types of trees in order to make sure they're native and have the ability to withstand being in a streetscape environment.
And then you put in this circle. Do you drive over it to come to Town Hall?
Yes, you would.
And what about the triangle behind it?
The triangle behind it, I did not change. What we looked to do in that area was to realign possibly the curb line adjacent to the residence on the right-hand side as you're seeing it. But yet, still allow that driveway to be extended to that garage that's there.
Well, again, I'll say, I don't like it.
Brianne, back to you? Or Dick?
Yes, I, I, again, painfully and fully aware of the challenges. And again, hats off to everyone for staying the course. There's no question that the mitigation in terms of this fierce traffic that we do have, I think one of, certainly the initial goal is to slow down traffic. Maybe it's not appropriate, but I am telling you that the, the, the only hope that the community has is to slow traffic and, and again, to whatever degree I know, maybe it's not practical and it was pushed off, it's just sort of that creating that indication that people are passing here.
Right.
And give that stronger message as trucks come through, because that certainly doesn't, doesn't happen now. So again, the slowing down of traffic, it is a thoroughfare just for commuting. And so my only other comment would be, is the parking issue. Because I do think when you attract businesses, let's take the substantive building of your old I G eight by Michael Bruno, and say regardless of a very large scale, say restaurant or whatever it is, is gonna require parking. Otherwise, the business is not even, can be an option. So I think it's just really critical that once you attract all these businesses, there needs to be a place for people to park. And as far as what I've seen here today, I think it's stunning and it's thoughtful and it does addresses, address safety. And, you know, again, but must keep an eye on those other things for us to really succeed.
Absolutely.
After all, if you can't attract the business and the people, then, then there's no success there.
Right.
Congratulations and I, I support what you have here.
Thank you. Again, it's phase one, this project, and we are moving on many different fronts.
And definitely, parking needs a formal plan.
Right, as long as this plan does not take away parking.
Correct.
You don't expect this plan to add parking.
It does add a couple of parking spots, but it does not address the problem.
I understand that, but what I'm saying, without question, anything that might diminish parking is probably not, not the right direction.
No, that, right. This would not do that.
Right.
But I don't see that, and I like the, the safety, and I, I, I do think that this community deserves an opportunity to have attractive place to walk. And I do see much more foot traffic. And there's, you know, of any age, youngsters, you have a school district right nearby. So just simply for that, it, it needs to be supported.
Yeah. Dale Matola, Tuxedo. I want to repeat Mike Santiani's comment about connecting to Tuxedo Farms. I think there's a real opportunity to bring more people into the downtown area without them having to park there. And I really don't believe that a connector up Hospital Road is going to have that effect. Perhaps people coming off the train that are interested in hiking would find that as a nice alternative to going into the state park. But as far as people who could walk to the train or walk to stores or walk to get something to eat, I think it has to be much closer to where the actual residences are and, and connect. Now, I know that, that in itself is a safety issue along Route 17, but I think that should be figured out.
That was another comment that we got from a couple of business owners on, on Route 17, who said that they believe that the road diet should start at the entrance of Tuxedo, of Tuxedo Farms. The one that's right next to those apartments there. There are some challenges to that in terms of getting sidewalks that go down, but with a road diet, there might be some possibilities. But that needs further, you know, studies, to be honest. The other, the other point I just want to make to basically back up what Fran was saying is that New York State has made a priority to pedestrian and bicycle pathways in downtown. And they are funding and offering tremendous amounts of grants for that. I think, was it, Port Jervis just got $10 million. So these kinds of, of programs that we're presenting leads themselves to yet bigger and better programs, which are within, in line with the objectives of the current New York State government.
Jennifer Weiss, Tuxedo Park. I think, I love this plan. I think it looks great. I was impressed with just the little bit of landscaping that was done a few years ago and how it made our little hamlet look better. But I think, despite the traffic and the parking and all those issues, which, you know, again, require a plan and multiple steps, I think, making the town look more beautiful and accessible and interesting where people want to come and explore the businesses, which right now, we have a lot of empty storefronts. So, you know, parking is an issue we need to deal with down the road once we get the businesses and the tax revenue in from the storefronts. But also, safety, public safety, it, it should be paramount, especially with our schools and people walking to and from the train station. These things should have been done years ago. And, you know, I don't think we should wait until somebody gets hit by a car or, you know, a dark alley where there's not lighting or whatever could happen. We don't want to have to do this because of a tragedy. It's something that I think is, is paramount. Beauty is safety will lead to other good things. So I like the plan. The only thing I would suggest, because I'm in the garden club, is that we plant native plants, native trees.
Yeah.
That will not require a lot of maintenance and things that are deer resistant, so we don't attract deer to our downtown area. But bravo. I think it's a, a great step and will make people more proud to live in this area and bring in, you know, more of the people that we... more of the people that we want attracted to Tuxedo Park. So, good for you. And now that there's money available to implement this, now is the time.
Thank you.
Okay, my turn. Angela Pyatt. Hello, everyone. I don't like sitting in public, but I need to talk. Because I know this is a lot of work. You guys have done a lot of work. We need to do something to make this town. I mean, what's what's happening, man? If we, it's a cute town. It's so sad. You'll be walking over to see that these storefronts, like you were saying. I mean, it's it just needs something. We have these people coming in from farms. We want to attract more people into the Tuxedo Farms. We want to make it more viable for everybody. Let's aliven it up. Now, Mike, I'm going to just make this little suggestion and I'll be waiting on things. Okay? Because I don't know that much about all this stuff, but is it feasible to make, I know you're going to say no, but is it feasible to make Route seventeen like one lane going one way and one lane going another? Because then you can have space for a sidewalk and bike lane.
That's a road diet. That's what we're talking about with road diet.
Oh, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't.
Yeah, so you make it skinny.
Wait, is possible?
Not two, but the objective is to have three lanes. One going north, one going south where they're turning, and then there's a through lane, which is what they did in Slotsburg. And they did it in Slotsburg with their tremendous. They did not think it was going to be a good idea and I've called there and they are thrilled that they did it. So.
So that means that what I just said is
Correct.
Oh, I know.
You're on target.
No, I think it's Are you going?
No, no, he wants to.
Oh, no. Let's be fair now.
Okay, I'm Kimberly.
I'm Kimberly Brayland from the park and I love the idea of a road diet. I would love if the sidewalks were going all the way from the park entrance down to the school and then on the west side and the east side. And then if I almost got hit the three times by trucks when I was coming out of the post office parking lot and I waited for that light and I would sit there for two extra seconds.
Yeah, I know. You take your road, no life in your hands.
Before I cross the street. But can you move this down a little bit? Okay, okay. Yeah, so here's the bank, right?
Yes.
And here, okay. I always during the summertime, everybody's going to the farmer's market and everything's happening right here and and all the hikers cross the street here. They don't walk down to here. So maybe if we could have an extra like crosswalk because they go straight there and they used to do it to go to the bank so that they could get money out or whatever, but now we don't have the bank there. But it'd be great if we had a sidewalk so people could go to the historical society now there.
But that's a New York. Okay, so that's a great idea and that has been brought up also. The issue is that is a New York's New York State DOT land property. So they have to agree to that and do it themselves because it's in it's in the right of way.
Maybe if we started this
Well, we have started discussions, yes. Yep, but that's all part of the whole New York State DOT conversations. The this plan is on town property. So we do not have to get permission from people to do this. This can be done immediately as opposed to having to wait for New York State DOT, which I will tell you, it took me one year, one full year to get an answer about a sign on Long Meadow Road from the DOT.
Can I ask a question? It's rolling.
Yeah, it's a it's a it's evolution, not revolution.
I think it should make it utterly unappealing for the truckers to come through. So they decide to jump on the thruway and and what you want, a word on the street, you don't want to go through Tuxedo. It doesn't ever get through.
Okay, so
Can I ask a question? May I ask a question, please? I don't see anything, a single thing in this plan right now that addresses the one thing I hear from everybody is the traffic calming. I don't see a single thing because we don't have any control over it. I don't see anything on Route seventeen right now in this plan that deals with that or the safety because all of that is is upon is part of New York State. I mean, they New York State DOT, the reason that Slotsburg was able to do it is because they have a complete street grant that and then they were able to make the three lanes or two lanes into three and, you know, change. This plan does not address that, right? At this point.
That that's not that's that's not this plan.
That's a separate plan.
You know, we have like
That's another plan.
But everybody's talking here as if like, oh, this is part of the plan.
No.
This is not part of the plan, right?
No.
I mean, as far as I can see.
No, the road diet is not part of the plan. We never discussed this as a road diet. We discuss it as stage two of what we need to do moving forward. This is stage one. Stage two is what we're currently doing, which is talking to the New York State DOT about how we can implement a road diet that goes through Tuxedo.
This is beautification. This is beautification.
This is this is safety and beautification. Yes.
And connectivity.
And connectivity.
Connectivity was was a theme in the comprehensive plan that this this plan addresses. And I mean, you're right, Maria, that this is that this isn't road a road diet because it can't be. This is what we can do this year because it's on town owned property and it's we've scoped out, we've talked to contractors, we know we can do this plan. Ed's done a brilliant job starting us off and of course, we need surveys, we need engineering plans. But in the meantime, I don't know if you want to think about it as like a five finger plan. Okay, this is just one of the five fingers.
But you're right, it should be a priority.
Road diet is a big priority. The school safety zone is another piece we're doing. So, you know, we have all these things happening.
Safety zone is not up to us either. The school safety zone is up to New York State.
You're right.
Park Avenue, that that's a huge improvement in the in the safety of walking around Tuxedo. And also the connection should
Well, I think that I think that they're not going to do anything until Tuxedo Farms actually goes online. I mean, I think that once they see, oh, my gosh, there's going to be, you know, five thousand more people coming in.
You know, if I may, a couple of thoughts. One is a comprehensive plan for any improvements or revitalization has short term, medium term, and long term plans. And the short term are really what you can do now. You know, DOT, for instance, could install a sidewalk, a crosswalk. They could put colorized paint in the pavement. They could do something in the short term that does not cost a lot of money that might be visual cues for traffic to sense they're coming into a place. You know, certainly, traffic calming is a long term plan. I worked on the Slotsburg Comprehensive Plan where it set forth the idea of the road diet. We had a gentleman, Mr. Peterson, at our meetings from New York State DOT. And that plan took fifteen to twenty years before it finally got implemented through whatever grants and funding they got. But I think you have to have the immediate, the, you know, immediate, short term, middle range, and longer term. And I think the road diet for this town has always been, it kind of keep being pushed forward. I think you need to have a champion who's going to be bothering DOT every day to get them here to Tuxedo to work on a project. Because if they can do it for Slotsburg, they can do it for Tuxedo. And and Slotsburg didn't have a big project that motivated them to put those improvements in. Certainly with Tuxedo Farms, you know, there's more going on, soon to go on in this community. So, you know, I would just try and do the things that you do have the money for. Also, I think Deirdre or Michelle mentioned it, we're working on these DRI programs. So we did the grants for Austining and for Haverstraw that gave them 10 million. But and those and we're working on one now for Port Jervis. But there are smaller grants, one that was awarded to the Village of Cornwall on Hudson. There it's a smaller grant called New York Forward, but it's still millions of dollars for improvements. And it's something that is attainable. But when you go for any of these grants, those agencies want to see a plan because they want to know if they're going to give you $3 million, what are your concrete improvements that you're going to use to have some benefit, especially economic benefit? So you have to have the plan to be able to seek the funding.
I have a point that I'd like to just make because I fortunately have to leave.
Maria.
Yeah. I I'm not
And then can we do EJ now? He's been waiting.
One of the big, one of the points and then it was a challenge and again, it was Tuxedo Reserve, now Tuxedo Farms. I think it's really important is it's not, it should not be that, I think, be careful because that should succeed and our downtown should succeed. And in essence, we're all one. So I think it would be a mistake to say, well, let's let's see and how wonderful and, you know, what we call Tuxedo Farms has done, the connectivity. Number one already is a message that we're together. So the fact is that we should have a beautiful, successful downtown with ample successful businesses that are safe, that we all can't wait to come to. It's been demonstrated in Slotsburg for the very first time when I was a Burton County resident before I moved to Tuxedo about 100 years ago. And now I actually see people that, you know, coming up from Burton County. So there's no reason for us to be a thriving success. It was proven in Slotsburg. So therefore, Slots, I mean, Tuxedo Reserve, I mean, the But Tuxedo Farms deserves to succeed and be a full belt out and serve its residents, which is actually town residents in town of Tuxedo. But our our downtown should be thriving. So that's why it's really critical not to just sort of pinpoint one. I think you have to look at it as a whole. Think of the end game, think of your goal and all the different pieces that have to be worked on collectively and just kind of create what you can. And the truth is, this town deserves it. We are stunningly special, 79% open space, you know, and and a sea of development. People will want to run here. It'll be stunning and special and it is already. And we deserve everything that you're proposing here.
Thank you. EJ?
Yes, I don't I don't need a microphone.
Well, no, you only do because otherwise the people
It's really for them. I just wanted to, do I have to turn on?
No, that's it's that's what's the beauty of it.
It's not I just want to go to starting at East Village where the train tracks cross. Doesn't sound like work.
No, it sounds like that.
For the room, so people at home can hear you. Oh, great, great. Okay. So basically, I live in East Village. So when I come out, I first thing I saw, I think this is over to the train station, right? So when we turn here, there's people sometimes here and literally can almost run over real quick and start. I'm sure you've heard all that before. So we're careful and thank God they jump out of the way and miss them. But the there's plenty of room on the grass where the Christmas trees are and stuff that you could build a nice little brick path or whatever there for them to walk on. We as car and our cars don't have to worry about that then. It looks nicer. The hikers that park over here by the little river at the train station lot, which has a ton of parking. So let's get the businesses and then worry about the parking. But anyway, the people can walk there, go over, get a sandwich, hit the sushi place and they feel like they're in this cool little town, right? Little river over here and they've got all that going. So Jared brings up a good point. This is definitely tight. We have to wait here to get people through. So if you're going to make any kind of a curb there, I would cut into the tulip holes. Maybe a little bit there or something if that's the plan or or get back against the train. That's cool. I know people walk behind the train too. I actually drive my bike through there. Then there was one thing, if you go this way, oh, definitely where the train station crosses to run over to the sushi place or whatever to hit these stores. There's definitely got to be something safer here. Like flashing lights, you can press the button across. That will also slow people down because now they're slowing down here, slowing down here. This is a dangerous pullout here. You definitely wait a couple of seconds, somebody stops. I've seen more accidents there when I was on the ambulance board in just my life. It's crazy. But one little thing here behind the post office, when I was a kid, there was this cool little road. I remember driving and went into the liquor store, the dentist, the hair salon was over there, nail salon's there now. But I don't know, it's probably private property, but it was a neat little road that went there. So if you were at the post office, you can then drive over here and then exit out of the liquor store lot, do your shopping here. And that was nice. And I also think, yes, where the liquor store is maybe another crosshoke. No, a little bit before by the IGA building, Hospital Road crossing, as we were saying. It's also definitely a good spot because that gets you to all these stores, Charles Toll's building. And maybe some will go where the junkyard used to be someday again, you know? But that's it. Other than that, um, oh, one other thing was this is off the beaten path. But anyway, I am a fan of all this. It's a school. The lighting showed is really neat, the path. As he gets walking there and it kind of, you know, and it's still, people mostly go slow. But it would be neat if it was just a painted, something attractive like that, not necessarily curbs that are up and more things for soap clouds they hit and stuff. It's probably not good. And yes, definitely a road diet. I'm a fan of that. If you could get that done. And I think that's probably, oh, the other one was in East Village with all the hikers and I mean busloads go in there on the weekends on nice days. The tunnel under New York thruway, this is something down the distance, not as important, I'm just bringing it up. That under there, I've been to towns before where they have artists come in and paint murals on on their bridges and stuff. It looks cool.
It's a great idea.
Maybe some come in and like paint people fishing and piking and biking and stuff and give people that. Because otherwise it's just a dark tunnel.
Yeah, I like that idea. Ed.
I want it.
Okay, it's for Joe, but while you're bringing that over to Joe, Ed, if you could go back behind the post office. Okay, so you'll see the green area between the post office and the liquor store parking lot. That is a potential pocket park. And I'm not sure we put a road there, EJ, but I'm sorry, between the post office, you see the cursor?
Okay, I don't know if you can see it, but there's the green rectangle there with trees.
Yes.
Okay, that is a piece of property between the post office and the liquor store parking lot. And I Jerry Matola is involved with this in the beginning. I have been, had been talking to United States Postal Service Real Estate Department down in Washington DC. They are interested in leasing that land for a parking pot park. And we, Deirdre and I have identified some potential funding for that. So. That will be interesting. What would happen is that we would add parking for the post office employees between the post office building and the pocket park. So but that's down the road. That's not this project.
Another plan.
It's just just another thing we're doing. But that's just because it's here on Ed's drawing, I just and because EJ highlighted it, I just wanted to say something. Bonnie?
So I wasn't sure, and this relates to what EJ was saying, that there there is some kind of parallel alley that goes up along the railroad. That's where you can see some of the parking.
Railroad right of way.
Yeah.
It is private, but you know, over time, again, if you want to encourage that to be and and property owners work together so people don't have to go back out on seventeen to be able to circulate around. The thing with the pocket park, you might want to still have the option of allowing that to continue through, just as an option.
Yeah, no, that's a really good idea.
Based on
Hi. Joe Rick, I I want to just wanted, I was going to ask you actually, behind, you were talking about behind those stores, behind those little nail salon, sometimes I go across to to library, but I I looked at that road back and I said, well, that would really be neat. But I I you've already, you know about it and you mentioned it.
Yeah, I was there. When I was a kid, it was a great little thing that I drove there and I just connected that. You didn't have to go on to seventeen and get off.
Yeah, that's what we Because I I walked back and I said, well, that would really be a nice little neat area. But obviously, you got the I just to sum it up, I I think that you have to start somewhere. I, I think that you'd have to start somewhere and this is a good start. It's scalable. It's, you, you, you have the connectivity, the safety and the beauty, you know, it's, that's, that's scalable. Uh, I hear connectivity, you know, from the high school perspective. Can you picture someday kids riding their bicycles? Tuxedo Farms or other areas going back, it would be really wonderful. Also where we're on the subject, you know, the high schools is gonna have their towel painted. They're gonna fix the clock. The clock has, I don't, Jerry may know, I don't think that clock does work. I've been here 23 years, it's never worked. It's accurate twice a day. So, and the light, the lights are gonna be on, it's gonna be painted. So the school's doing that a lot, but it would really be, the connectivity thing that you all mentioned, it's, it's, you gotta start somewhere. And this seems like a scalable thing that you can do and you can manage. And all these other ideas, all street signs, like, you know, the street.
Sloughsburg put up these fancy, I don't know if you have to go that far, but nice street signs would be really awesome.
And remember that in Sloughsburg, how skeptical the people were with that, that, that.
Road diet, yeah.
We saw this, you know, the guy fixes the cars. He didn't think it was gonna work the week before. And then afterwards he said, wow, this is great, you know? So, uh, but this is, this is, sounds doable. And if you, you know, and as you get it going, you'll be able to get all these other things too. So anyway, that's, that's what I'm.
Joanne?
Let me give you this.
Thank you, Joe. And after Joanne, let's see if there's somebody waiting, uh, on the internet.
Uh, Joanne Hanson, Tuxedo Park. Um, I commend the, the, the board and the planners as Fran says.
Excuse me a second, please, it can't hear.
This has been a, a project that's been a very, very long time coming. And so I would just point out that if we have a plan, that enables us to get grants, that enables us to get funding. And so this is kind of the base case that enables the, the town to move forward and get money and do planning. And I think that, that starting here with safety is really important. You know, I walk out of the park and, and trying to get across 17 to go to the train station or to the bus station. And to address those issues is, I think, really, really critical. Um, I think the idea of additional places to cross the road for pedestrians like Sloughsburg had could be in, if you put two or three of them in, a de facto traffic slowing mechanism. I mean, obviously that happens when people use them and people have to understand that, that they're now in use. But indicating on the road with, with road signage that these crossroads are there, um, I think provides both safety and potentially a sort of de facto slowing down of the traffic because you have multiple lights through the town. But I think, um, it really is important to address those safety issues with the children walking, with people trying to, to get back and forth across 17 between our public transportation and our businesses. And so this is an excellent, um, starting point. Um, so I hope that it moves forward.
Thank you, Joanne. Uh, Jerry, we, we need to get to the people, uh, joining us by Zoom, but first we'll have Jim Hayes.
Thank you, Jerry. Yes, Jim Hayes, Tuxedo Park. Uh, I'm sure you've considered overhead walkways over, uh, channel seven, I mean, or Route 17. Have you discarded that idea because of the effort it takes to use them?
Well, it's, I think it would be on Hospital Road. And then I think the, uh, issue we came up against was that, you know, you have to start and go up, um, and then you have, and you would, would have to encroach on private property. And I think that was the main problem and, and height, how high you have to go.
I was thinking of, of them in places that are not, uh, regular walkways where there aren't any lights, any of that, but just someplace where if you want to cross and you know you can cross without having to stop at all, you could cross.
Maybe you could take a look at that.
I'm thinking of schoolchildren coming from the East Village and people just trying to get across the road and they know they can walk over that and they just do it.
Okay, that's a good idea.
There are no engineering or construction reasons why we couldn't have elevated walkways. It would require a significant amount of money, obviously. And it would require the incorporation of what's currently private land. However, that would be accomplished. So what I see from this plan as currently developed is it's been attempted to come up with a plan that does not need to involve anyone except the town for permission to do anything. That is.
That's a good one to add to a medium or long-term project, right? Would you agree?
I, sure. Um, I think that the, the attempt to do this all in-house has some advantages because, sure, we can get it all done quickly, but severely limits what we can do.
And.
Maybe.
For example.
Maybe it could be on the back burner. I mean, in other words, go ahead, but I mean, have that as a concept that, that could be used if you feel there's a, a need. And I, I just, again, I don't know enough about the people, how many people are crossing and how many kids are crossing, uh, and, and how often they cross. I mean, I just don't know. You, you guys know that better. But I would also wonder, can you have any, is there any effort with DOT to, uh, change the speed limit through the community? Can you change that on Route 17?
Well, we did try to change the speed limit up by Dottie Audrey's, you know, to extend the 35. And they did a study about three years ago, maybe. Um, and they determined, no, they wouldn't change the speed limit. And we were trying to get a left turning lane into Duck Cedar Plaza because of the fatality that was there at that time. And, uh, they just won't do it. They, no.
We've tried it in South Fields as well. I think before I was on the board, Dobam said that, you know, they had tried had, because in the, where Orange Turn, Orange Turnpike in Route 17, that's like an accident alley there. And, uh, they would not put, you know, even like we, we thought, we asked for like a flashing light or something, um, and they wouldn't do it. They said there weren't enough, uh, traffic fatalities.
I understand that's.
Okay, I just, I just like, again, as others have complimented the board on, on this effort. And it's a big effort and it has been going on a long time. Uh, but that's okay. Uh, you're, you know, you're making progress. And I think the beautification, those, those elements that you've put in are really good. I mean, I think it, if you just spruce the place up with things like that, which doesn't, which isn't very expensive, but I mean, I'm, you obviously should go for much more than that. But all of that would make it look so much nicer, I would think.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, Marissa, can you see if anybody is, would like to add a comment?
Can we, can we go?
Can we lose the graphics so we can see?
We go back to the screen view. Not that we don't like the graphics, but.
Uh, there we are. Okay, uh, if you would like to raise your hand, if you have a comment at home? Okay, uh, David McFadden.
Okay. Oh, hi, everybody. How's everyone doing? Um, David McFadden from Tuxedo Park. Uh, thank you very much for the presentation. It was very thorough. Um, I know there's, uh, been discussions about changing the traffic patterns in and out of Tuxedo Park that might be related to the railroad. Has anyone seen those plans? Uh, where, for example, uh, they would change the location of the light. And, and instead of it being a blinking light, it would be a, a green or red light. And they would make the exit, the current exit of the park that heads south, a one-way exit. So we would be required to go, uh, to where many people, uh, drive and exit north. That would be our new entrance. Has that been considered, one? And two, you know, the Tuxedo Park Commons, that's, that's gonna be a pretty interesting place, you know, with a lot of activity, potentially new stores and so forth. Do we see that as competition or, um, do we embrace that? In other words, will it suck up all the, all the energy, um, from trying to create a hamlet? And, and if so, if that's the thinking, what might we do about it?
I'll address the first question and then I'll bounce the second one over to Bonnie because I know she has a good answer for that probably. Um, so as far as the, uh, MTA plan for the new traffic light and the crossing, yes, we have seen the, uh, plan that was originally about five years old and, and it's been updated. And in that plan, actually, they would be building that sidewalk and the lighting, uh, through the park, um, from connecting Powerhouse Parking Lot to the Train Station Parking Lot. So that is a possibility that we're following up with the MTA on that. Uh, and then as far as, you know, focusing the hamlet as we know it, as the historic center, uh, and Tuxedo Farms retail area, uh, I, I know Bonnie has some thoughts on that.
So I know, uh, when the 2003 study was put together, uh, there was a market study that also accompanied it. And there was an analysis of how much retail could be supported between the town and Tuxedo Reserve, now Farms. And as a result of that study, it was determined that the amount of retail space they have was sort of capped in order to ensure that there was still marketability of the hamlet and the business spaces that are there. So in part, why you see the amount of proposed commercial space in Tuxedo Reserve at the level it is, is because there was a desire to still ensure that Tuxedo Hamlet as a commercial center remain viable. And Fran's nodding, so, yeah.
Yeah. That would be terrific, especially if we could get a, uh.
Right.
I'm sorry, Fran, go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I said that was a huge priority, Dave, because it would be unfortunate if all of a sudden the town of Tuxedo was down, down the road.
So as a follow-up, um, working together with Tuxedo Farms, it would be terrific, obviously, if we could get a shopping center or a grocery store. Um, I would encourage that because right now we have to go all the way down into Mawa, uh, or up north into Monroe. And that's always been a handicap for us in terms of property values, et cetera. So, you know, I'd love to see them put something in like that. That would be terrific. And I also want to thank Fran for, um, appointing me to the original Architecture Review Board of the town 20 years ago. Look what you did, Fran.
I know, you hate me.
I'll just add that, um, after Tuxedo Farms, well, in the interim between Tuxedo Reserve and Tuxedo Farms, uh, Tuxedo Farms pursued a shopping center in the village of Sloughsburg at the entry. Because that entrance area that you see, the southerly entrance on 17, that's, uh, Tuxedo Reserve lands. And so I believe they got approval for a shopping center there. And I believe it might have included a grocery store. At this time, I think when they came through the process, they just put that on the back burner. Uh, so I don't know what the current plan is, but it certainly was envisioned, um, previously.
I just can't help myself, but I will tell, um, Fran, please, again. I mean, from the first moment, I was in retail all my life, self-employed in Burton County. And of course, when I came to Tuxedo, we loved what we happened. We all were willing to sacrifice, but it is a sacrifice. As Dave said, to, you know, going 15 minutes, 20 minutes south or 15 minutes up. It's not a long distance. The truth is, is I think we could do pretty well and I think we could definitely do far better than what we're sitting right now. And in combination of the Tuxedo Farms and a more, you know, beautiful and filled up downtown, but we have to face the fact simply that it's, to support a grocery store, it's, you know, just don't have to per capita 10, within a 10-mile radius. So no, I'm not sure that it will have the ShopRide or the Acme or the Whole Foods, something of that scale. But I think in, and ultimately, hopefully down the road, I think we'll do very well. But I think a major chain, I, I, I don't really see it happening. And it's just a geographic, the per capita population, it would be treacherous for any, um, anyone with that business. Okay.
Fran, I would only, I know the, I would imagine, I think there was discussion of smaller format type grocery stores, like a Chico's.
There was a plan in front of, uh. At the planning board in Sloughsburg to put in a shopping center, which would include a small boutique-like grocery store at the light where you go into the, um, to the fields there.
Like a little like a marketplace.
Like a little boutique, yeah, like a marketplace.
Right.
Like that. That's, that's a plant, that's in front of the planning board in Sloughsburg right now.
Yeah, not the large scale, but.
Right, right, right. Right.
But we'll, we'll need the farms, I think, to really make that change.
Yeah. Does anyone at home, uh, have a, another comment or question? Okay, uh, we'll switch it back to the town. I mean, uh, the audience, uh, Dale. Um, something EJ said made me wonder if the plan is for that driveway in front of the train station, is that meant to, it, there's one car on there. So it looks like it's meant to be one-way. I'm not sure if that's the plan, but I, I know that most people from the East Village turn left onto Antonelli Drive and go out at the light at the park, at the post office. So if it's only one-way, that might be an issue.
The idea is really trying to respect the existing width that's there. The existing width is still not wide enough for two cars to pass. So it's sort of an honor system type of intersection, like what you have behind one of the other buildings. So that's what we're trying to do within the scope.
Jerry Matola again. First of all, the road behind the post office going on down to past Charlie Toll's building and on down to where the old Tuxedo Ford garage was, since I'm dating myself. Um, is, is a railroad right away? So you would have to contact a railroad? And if not, if they would let you use it, fine. If not, it's too bad.
They won't.
Yeah, they won't.
Assume that.
Well, we can ask.
Second point, everybody's talking about road diet. One of the things we can do right now is get the town of Tuxedo Police to enforce speed limit. I mean, we have a speed sign, radar sign on the quarter where I live. And obviously that got taken out by a vehicle. So we all know that everybody speeds through there. A long time ago, there was a standing joke on the Tonight Show, don't go through Tuxedo, you'll get a ticket. So why can't we get that back?
Thank you, Jerry. Do we have any other comments or questions? Oh, we do.
Yes.
Well, um, there's been a lot of, uh, common ground here. The notion of calming Route 17 and the need for crosswalks across Route 17. Anybody who has gone to the farmer's market or walked down from Town Hall and tried to cross Route 17, it's painfully obvious that we need crosswalks. As Deidre and Michelle have pointed out, that's no easy lift dealing with New York State Department of Transportation, but that's no reason to not pursue it. Uh, obviously, the Tuxedo Farms project, as it's called now, Fran, uh, took 30 years of persistence. And I, I'm proud to say that this board got it done, okay? So persistence is a key to anything that's a heavy lift. We've also talked about, you know, uh, Bonnie, our planner, talked about, you know, what can you get done now, okay? I'm the chief financial officer for the town. Any plan starts with funding, okay? So, uh, obviously, we, all of this has to be considered amongst all of the needs of the town from the full 55 square miles that the town entails. So that's what this board will be doing over the next couple of months as well. You know, integrating this conversation into our capital plan as to where do we have the money for this? You might have noticed on your tax bills that this town board has worked really hard to keep your taxes low. And, uh, so anything costs money. But, you know, collectively, we have to decide what's, what. But, you know, collectively, we have to decide what's, what's most needed. There are certainly elements that have been presented here today that would come under the category of low-hanging fruit. As, as Deputy Supervisor Rice Scott pointed out, a lot of the things that are being proposed there are on town property, which does make them more doable, okay? There was a screen that was up early on that talked about the need for sidewalks and safety. And who isn't for that, you know? Certainly, it was pointed out that what a major impact some minor landscaping has done. I assume probably some of that was referring to, well, recently, the Highway Department did these tulips in the berm in front of the train station. I think it's a nice addition. Certainly, certainly the hydrangeas that Michael Bruno put in front of his building are popping and eye-catching. That's not a big heavy lift in this town to get things like that done. Going back to, I'm sorry, I took a photo of the screen. The traffic calming, come on, everybody wants to see that. Is it the road diet, maybe? Certainly, Jerry, the police enforcement. Believe it or not, I do work on that with, with the chief on a regular basis. There's been some improvements. Has that moved? Okay, there's room for improvement. We can all agree. I'm trying to look for things that we can agree on.
And we're getting money for the town.
To a certain degree, yep. The district theme was brought up about, you know, how do we stay connected with this new Tuxedo Farms? Certainly, we have the historic district here and that needs to be preserved. You know, there was some talk, you know, when I, but when I do hear the name Store Road, I gotta tell you, I stand out there on Store Road and I don't see any stores. So it's kind of misnamed there. And, yeah, I could see the connectivity between the school and the library, absolutely. You know, we've talked about sidewalks. I think it's been clear that we're not really talking about raised paved sidewalks because there's a lot of engineering problems. And the drain that was pointed out as possibly as a rain garden, possibly. But, you know, all of those considerations, where does the stormwater go when you add curbs and things like that? And, and even just, yeah, there was once, one photo of two kids walking in the middle of the street. The reason why they're walking in the middle of the street because there's not a lot of traffic that goes down there right now anyway. So it already is kind of safe for them because of that fact. But I'm not just, you know, there are certainly improvements that could come from some of these ideas here. But everything starts with money. So let's be real, the first thing we got to do is look at that.
Well, the grants are available now.
Well, the grants are available, but it's matching funds that first, the town has to come up with our share of the money. And first, it's going to cost at least $40,000 just to figure out what those costs are.
And also, what if somebody's hit by a car and Susan can't?
I'd like to not make this a debate. I'd like to just give my point. And, and I think that's what needs to happen here respectfully, that it's not a debate. We all need to be able to voice our opinions. And then it will be up to the town board to decide a path forward. But if anybody knows me, I think I've been very respectful listening to everybody because I'm a talker. And I've, I've waited till the last five minutes to do that. Because we do need your input. And I really, this is the largest group I've seen at a town board meeting probably in my three and a half years as supervisor. So thank you for coming. And thank you to Deidre and Michelle because, and to the, to the Burgess continuing and Fran for getting this started. Because there are definitely seeds here that need to be implemented that come from this plan. The lighting, absolutely, that could continue this historic kind of look in this part of town as was shown in images. There is this kind of lighting currently around the train station. As far as a focal point, that clearly is our iconic building. It's been used very nicely for the Clean Air event. And, and there's talk about outdoor furniture, street furniture and stuff like that. There's still a lot of room for improvement over there that could also start to demonstrate what these seeds of ideas can do. The Tuxedo LDC, which is funded as a result of the special permit, we did give grants to the Historic Society, Historical Society, to the Carlin Building because since I first moved here, people have been saying, oh, my God, that white flaking building, what can we do about it? Well, we did motivate Carl, who owns the building, to fix up that building. So that will be much improved in the very near future. And as far as new businesses, Scott Lesko and Augusta Properties has been doing a lot of effort to upgrade the, the old orange top and also was successful in getting a matching grant to improve that facility. So hopefully, by the end of the summer, a new restaurant will be coming in there. Yeah. So, you know, there's been talk here tonight about attracting new businesses. I'm challenged to actually identify what properties those would inhabit, but I'm certainly not opposed to it myself personally, both as a resident and as your current town supervisor. But, yeah, I think I mean, we as a town board need to work together to address what the concerns that were raised here of how is the safety plan and what actually can get done. And first of all, the ends of both Store Road and Library Road are a traffic cacophony. There's just no rhyme or reason at either end of those streets as to where you're supposed to go. So that's something that the town needs to fix regardless of what happens here with this Burgess study. Joanne, I saw you just nod your head. I'm sure anybody who drives down and you get to the end of going southbound on, on Park Avenue, when you get to the end where Library Road comes, I don't know who's supposed to do what there and you just pray that nobody's coming around the turn there. And the same thing down at the, at the Hospital Road to Store Road. Well, it's clear that Store Road is one-way north, but Library Road is two ways. And in my view, it certainly isn't wide enough for two lanes of traffic safely. And then you get to that traffic triangle and coming down from the promenade, that is absolutely traffic chaos there. I can't believe that it's divine intervention that that has been relatively accident-free. So my last 20 seconds would be, yeah, we, this town board will absolutely work together to look for elements of how we can incorporate these ideas of beautification and, and safety, knowing that a lot of them are the heavy lifts of dealing with the crosswalks and New York State Department of Traffic, the sidewalk in front of that connects between Tuxedo Square and the old Chase Building. Just so you know, the Historical Society building in Chase is looking to reinvent themselves, not only just as the Historical Society, but as a welcome center for Tuxedo. And something that could be really interesting. But also selling this notion of what is this district about as the historic district? It talks about the district theme that you had there, Ed, on your screen. You know, clearly, the, in my view, the theme of this area is the historic nature, both of the, the library building, the train station, Tuxedo Square, obviously, the gate to Tuxedo Park. This building that we're in that needs a hell of a lot of renovation that will be in the capital plan that we need to consider to work all this together. So it's, it's a complicated thing, but there's certainly some low-hanging fruit here that can, can happen sooner, as Bonnie pointed out. And it is the stimulus that you're talking about, Deidre and others. So I got my five minutes in, so thank you very much. I don't know if you guys want to make some closing? Because I think, I think nine o'clock was about the end of this.
Well, that talks fast, so we got a minute for concluding statements.
Okay.
Okay, I'll conclude. So essentially, I think that many of the points that were raised are very important, but I.
Could you just give patience for one more minute, please? Thank you.
Yeah. However, you know, I think it's important to point out that this is one part of many parts that we will need to do in order to revive the downtown. And we are working on many things. Everyone here is working on different things. But just to outline them, we do have the economic study that we're currently underway, which is an economic analysis of the town of Tuxedo and the corridor that would identify areas where we could, in fact, find commerce. And we are working with the Orange County Economic Development on where we could possibly find opportunities for businesses to come in, such as, you know, boutique hotels and breweries, things like that, that would bring people and tourism into town. So we are working with them on identifying those kind of areas because uniquely to Tuxedo, we have a lot of private property that is owned by the town. So that gives us more of an opportunity than most other towns. And it's very attractive, by the way. The school safety zone, which is part of the traffic calming, that is something that we're waiting on and we have gotten the commitment of Senator Scopis in order to move that forward. We also talked to him about the oversized trucks and we're also discussing that with, with Slotsburg, who also has the same problem. And by adding in and maybe re-implementing things like the weigh station so that people, many of these oversized trucks, when they're trying to avoid the weigh station, if they know that they're going to hit it here, they're going to avoid our area. So these are the kind of things, they're small things, but each thing adds to a bigger picture. So it's important to understand that there's no one answer here. There's a series of answers. We have to work on many things to make a big, a big program move forward. The sewer department, I mean, in the sewer, it's really important because it supports the entire hamlet and that is an ongoing project. And the road diet, as I said, we are talking to New York State DOT about that. That is a priority of mine to make sure that's moving forward. I have learned more about New York State DOT administration than I ever thought I would ever need to know. But no matter what you do, there's a different person to talk to. I can tell you that. So with that said, I really appreciate everybody coming in and know that we're all working very hard here on making this a beautiful village and hamlet again.
Thank you all for coming. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting at 9:02 PM. Can I, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Before you run away, even though the meeting's over, you've.